Here.
President.
Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janey. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley.
That was just recorded.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Madam President, we do have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to turn the volume down a little bit here. At this time, I would like all the guests to please arise as Counselor Asabi George comes up to introduce our clergy for the day. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that everyone remain standing as Counselor Asabi George leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, everyone. I'm delighted to introduce Rabbi Claudia Kreiman to open our meeting today, especially since Jews have just celebrated Rosh Hashanah, the New Year. We're in the middle of TuKot, the harvest holiday. Claudia, Beth Zion in Brookline. She is deeply committed to social justice work, both through the GBIO, the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization, and the Tikun Olam Group. That translates to "Repairing the World." So, I think she's a perfect match for the council. Welcome, Rav Claudia.
Thank you for having me here. Eloie Kola Biot, God of All Creation. Today, we are gathered to celebrate the wonderful people who have volunteered their time and talents to the Greater Boston Jewish Coalition of Literacy and all volunteers that volunteer in our city. In thanksgiving and gratitude, let us take a moment to reflect on the value of the volunteers who have helped to enrich the lives of so many children. Per ke avot, the ethics of our ancestor teaches us, al shloshat ha'olam ha'ala voda on three things, on Torah, on ships, and acts of loving kindness. You, the volunteers of the Greater Boston Jewish Coalition of Literacy, are bringing these three pillars of our Jewish tradition to life by dedicating your time to teach children to read. You teach them Torah by teaching them to love reading, love culture, be curious about what the world can offer to them. You serve God by spending time with children quickly and getting to know them, knowing their joys and sorrows, knowing their soul. And you do great acts of loving kindness by sharing your love of reading, your love of children, your love of God's creation. Personally, as Rabbi of Temple Beth Zion, I'm proud and grateful that our community has been in this program for over 20 years, dedicated to the mitzvah of healing. We are grateful to the Boston City Council and Boston City Councilor Nisa Asabi George for recognizing these volunteers and to the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Boston for facilitating and bringing to life this project. We pray, God, that you will continue to guide each of us to find our place in making this world a better place and to serve you in joy, basimcha. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi. At this time, Counselor Asabi George will stay up here. She has a special presentation.
Thank you, Rav Claudia. I hope you don't go too far. I think we're going to have everyone join us now. Into our special presentation for today. I'm really excited to welcome our guests today from the Greater Boston Jewish Coalition for Literacy. There are three things I love about this organization. I hope they're coming up. Where are they? Come on up. Come on up. One, they teach kids how to read and how to fall in love with reading, especially in under-resourced schools, including many in the Boston Public Schools. Two, I love their model of engaging other organizations in their mission so they can tap into the goodwill and talent of so many people. That volunteers are the heart of what makes this mission work. And we spoke a little bit earlier this morning in the Curly Room over coffee and apples about the over 100 years of volunteering that is joining me here on this. And the work that's happened in so many of our Boston Public Schools. In particular, today, we have volunteers joining us. Florence, over 20 years of volunteering at the Aron Berger School. Volunteers from the Winship School that offered a challenge to the principal, if you get a librarian, we'll get you a library, and did just that. And then also, a volunteer from the Mozart who includes movement therapy in the work that happens there and realizes how important all of this is to the achievement of our children and realizes that although their work often towards improving and strengthening literacy with our kids, that it's really about building leadership. We're here today also lucky to have Jeremy Burton with us, who is the Executive Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Boston, to tell us a little bit more about the program. Jeremy? Cheer from the crowd.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George, and thank you, Counselor Presley, for that. It's a great privilege to be up here today on behalf of the Jewish Community Relations Council and the Greater Jewish Coalition for Literacy. Appreciation and gratitude to the council and to the city of Boston for the deep partnership we have enjoyed with you over the years, in particular, in the work of lifting up the memory of the Holocaust and stewarding the memorial, which is right across the street from this building, as well as the work that we've had the opportunity to do in a dozen or so public schools each year with hundreds of volunteers over the last 20 years, working with youth. This is a reflection of our commitment in the Jewish community amongst those who care deeply about student development, to be able to work with the Boston Public Schools and bring their expertise as individuals, as volunteers, as some of them are retired teachers, in order to leverage that expertise and support the students of the city and to realize all the opportunities that come from a good education. And we greatly appreciate the partnership with you and look forward to many more years of the work of Tikun Ha'ir, Repair of the City. Thank you very much.
I also want to recognize that we've been joined by a special guest in our crowd over here, Susan Goodman. Susan has written 39 books, which have gotten more awards than I can list. And her latest book, of special interest maybe to us, is a book called The First Step: How One Girl Put Segregation on Trial. Susan is also a star because she's a board member and volunteer with a program. Wonder More. We think about our kids and how we're encouraging them to learn and to grow. I love the name of that organization, Wonder More. And Wonder More is a program that brings authors and illustrators into the Boston Public Schools. Susan is here and just shared with us during our conversation this morning that your book won what award? Share with us, Susan, please.
The Massachusetts Book for Children's Literature.
It won that prize just recently, Book of the Year. So, Susan, thank you for being here. We're recognizing all of the volunteers that are working.
Sitting at the bar, a couple adult beverages, and all of a sudden, the young lady sitting next to me lies down on the ground and starts stretching out and doing all these weird contortions. And I'm thinking to myself, what's going on here? I said, "You are right. What's happening?" And she said, "Oh, I'm fine. I was just playing in a football game yesterday, and I have an injury. I'm sore. I'm working on it." And we started talking about the Renegades and about how they are an outstanding professional football team in Boston, and that there was not enough awareness about them and the work they're doing and what great role models these women are for boys and girls, athletes and non-athletes across the area. So, we're excited to bring them here, really excited to welcome them with this trophy because while the Patriots couldn't quite get it done this year, the Renegades did. So, I want to. So, we do have a proclamation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but according to Counselor O'Malley, it means that they're exempt from parking regulations in the city, so they're going to. So, they're going to send all those to Counselor O'Malley's office. It's right over there. But I do want to let, I think, Ashley's going to say if you, it's one of the captains. But before I turn it over, I do just want to say it is really important that we continue to celebrate these efforts and help spread the word. This is a great family-friendly activity. They play in East Boston. Let's continue supporting the Renegades and their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for having us all here. Also, thank you, Counselor Zachem, and your team's efforts organizing this whole thing for us. Said a little bit of this earlier today, but it's always a great pleasure to be recognized here at City Hall. It was lovely seeing our flag being raised earlier this morning. Hopefully, everybody can take a quick peek at that on your way out as well. It's the big red one, black star, R on it. This team, I mean, this group of ladies up here, we have the pleasure of playing a sport that we really love. And not only do we get to play it because we love it, we also do things like hopefully inspire other adults and children to sort of follow their dreams as well, whether that's sports or academics or anything of that nature. We oftentimes realize that women and girls get dealt far fewer cards in their lives. This team, what we hope to support and sort of display is the fact that that's not going to always be the case, and we're here to prove that stigma wrong. We're very humbled to be here today. We always feel encouraged to keep up our efforts here, to continue on creating our own opportunity to play this game, but also to trailblaze greater opportunities for those to come in behind us and play this sport as well. We, again, thank you, thank all of you as national champions this year round. Hopefully, we can do this again next year as 2019 champions. I didn't breathe at all for that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
She really misses being here. Thank you so much for having us again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselors Asabi George and Counselor Zachem. At this time, I think, Madam Clerk, we have to amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Wu has joined us, and I think Counselor Edwards.
And Counselor Flaherty.
And Counselor Flaherty. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing, no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1416, message and order approving and appropriation of $809,500 from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for projects described in the attached order. The commissioners met on August 31, 2018, and voted to approve these projects. The projects will ornament the city's streets, ways, squares, and parks.
Docket 1416 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services, Veterans, and Military Affairs.
Docket number 1417, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant, Play Around the Snowy City, awarded by Harvard Business School, to be administered by the mayor's office. This grant will fund the community of practice on play and the field of early childhood learning and development.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Madam Clerk, could you just remind me of the docket number that I'm referencing?
1417.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was taking a note. I wanted to make sure I was speaking to the right docket number.
Thank you.
I rise to ask for suspension and passage of docket number 1417. The mayor's office of New Urban Mechanics has been awarded a $10,000 grant from Harvard Center on the Developing Child to implement play around the snowy city. Let's hope. One of the city of Boston's previous playful Boston projects, Play Around the City, explored how warm-weather playful inventions at BPS bus stops impacted learning and behavior. With two projects in Boston's public spaces, Play Around the Snowy City will scale that learning from the warmer fun, warmer first run to explore how impactful winter activities can be achieved. I appreciate support on the suspension and passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George is the chair of the Committee on Education, Suspension of the Rules, passage of docket 1417. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1417 has been passed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 1418 and 1419 together?
Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1418, communication was received from Sally DeGloro, city auditor, transmitting reports listing transfers made solely for the purpose of closing accounts for fiscal year 2018. And docket number 1419, notices received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, September 18, 2018, until 8:30 p.m. on Tuesday, September 18, 2018.
Docettes 1418 and 1419 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1414, order for a working session regarding the opioid crisis.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This past Monday, I chaired a working session on the opioid crisis with the intention of bringing our work on the council and the work within the state legislature together to form a collaborative and productive approach to tackling the umbrella of issues that we often refer to as the symptoms of the opioid crisis. I would first like to thank my colleagues, counselors, O'Malley, Flynn, Janey, Edwards, Wu, and our committee's vice chair, Counselor McCarthy, for attending this important session. I'd also like to thank state representative, the Democratic nominee, Representative-elect Mika Elgado, for attending this meeting, as well as many of our colleagues and their staff who are represented at this meeting as well. I often say that government is a team sport. I strongly believe that this is the most effective way for us to make impactful change. We need to work together, staying true to our role as elected officials and continuing to identify and work with key partners and experts in the field. As chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, it is important to me that we are doing more than just holding hearings and meetings in our neighborhoods, that we are taking the next step and being very intentional about creating work around the solutions that are offered by many of the experts in the field. During Monday's meeting, many ideas were brought to the table, and a very thoughtful and robust conversation took place. And we have some tangible ideas and opportunities for next steps, and I look forward to convening this delegation again, perhaps sometime next month, and talk about some of those very specific steps if those aren't happening in the meantime. I do ask that this docket remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. At this time, docket 1414, remain in the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. Madam Clerk, if we could read docettes 1148 and 1149 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1148, message disapproving and ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the City of Boston Code ordinances regarding lobbyist registration and regulation. Docket number 0987, passed by the city council on July 27, 2018. Along with this veto, I am filing a redrafted ordinance that I urge you to approve expeditiously. And docket number 1149, message and order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled "An Act to Regulate Lobbying Activities Before the City of Boston." This home rule petition modifies docket number 0101, passed by your honorable body on June 27, 2018, which remains unsigned and will not be submitted to the general court for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Monday, September 24, the Committee on Government Operations held a working session on both dockets, docket 1148 and 1149. These matters are sponsored by Mayor Martin Walsh, and referred to the committee back on August 1 of 2018. I want to take this opportunity to thank him for his resubmission, as well as working with his team throughout the entire process. It's been somewhat lengthy between a number of different hearings and working sessions. Special mention to Christine O'Donnell and Michelle Goldberg from our staff, putting their heads together as attorneys. You, Madam President, your involvement in this, as well as our colleague, Counselor Wu, was instrumental in sort of putting a lot of the finer touches together, and assist from our colleague, Lady Redwoods, and also from Counselor Zachem. So, we had more attorneys working on this document than I think we have in the building, but nonetheless, I think it's a very thoughtful piece of legislation and one that really speaks to how business is conducted here in the city of Boston. And so, making sure that we identify those areas, making sure that we identify those potential loopholes, and also heard loud and clear from the mayor that he wanted to get this done. He wanted it done a couple of years ago, but it took a little while. But I think we have what is probably definitely the first of its kind of legislation in our city, but I think it will not only serve our city well, but it will be a model for other municipalities across the country. So, the proposal, docket 1148, includes the existing regulations at the state level. The proposal imposes annual registration requirements and annual fees. The annual filing fee for lobbying entity will have to register at $300. The annual filing fee for the client will be $150. The annual filing fee for the lobbyist shall be $150. Docket 1148 establishes, and this was really at the mayor's insistence, Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, to investigate and make findings relative to the lobbyist registration and regulation. Docket 1148 also incorporates the quarterly reporting requirements for lobbyists, lobbying entities, and clients. The quarterly reporting requirements were included in the initial ordinance that was passed by the council, and was really through the great efforts of our colleague, Counselor Wu. Docket 1149, the home rule petition seeks to do the following: establish civil penalties up to $10,000 for registration and reporting violations; judicial review and collaboration with the attorney general and state court system pursuant to both civil and criminal prosecutions; codifying the confidentiality of compliance of investigations; and applying regulations of the lobbying activity to the city's quasi-independent public agencies, including the BRA, doing business as the BPDA, the Boston Public Health Commission, the Boston Licensing Board, and the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. After working session this past Monday, which was attended by IGR, the mayor's IGR, Chris English and Katie King, along with our city clerk, Maureen Feeney, and Research Bureau Director, President Sam Tyler, the committee once again addressed a number of outstanding concerns, requiring attorneys who may be appearing at the licensing board and zoning board to register as lobbyists, which may create an additional lobbying class. Counselor Edwards raised some very important issues about the adverse impacts on legal services attorneys and how they'd be able to financially represent their injured clients, the threshold issues around number of hours and payments, et cetera, allowing for council approval from members that are appointed to the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, and language changes, particularly including the definition of policy and what defines policy. And that was really through efforts and insistence from Sam Tyler from the Municipal Research Bureau. As a result of the working session, the committee presents the new drafts for both the home rule petition and the ordinance, acknowledging the way we do business here in the city and not just a reflection of how the state and federal regulations work. The docket 1148 would address new sections of the City of Boston Code that would place registration and reporting requirements on lobbyists, and would also be titled "The Lobbyist Registration and Regulation Ordinance." Docket 1148 will be amended in 2-15.1 by including a purpose clause, which explains the intent of the ordinance, which is to promote good governance, good governance and transparency. In section 2-15.2, the definition section will be amended by identifying activities that are considered lobbying activities and identifying activities that are not considered lobbying activities. The definition of the term "city employees" was also amended to ensure the provisions of the ordinance includes those that are also holding office. The term "other lobbying organization" was incorporated into the definition of lobbying entity. A provision was also added to require the city council have a hearing prior to the appointment of commissioners. Provisions were also removed to give the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission greater discretion over their operation in an order to promote regulations, which, again, was at the assistance of our colleague, Counselor Edwards. Further, with respect to docket 1149, the following amendment is recommended. Section 5, if the city of Boston adopts an ordinance regulating lobbying activities, the commissioners to be appointed by the mayor of Boston shall be subject to confirmation from the city council. At this time, as chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that docket 1148, which is a message disapproving an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the City of Boston Code ordinances regarding lobbyist registration and regulation, docket 0987, along with the veto, is a redrafted ordinance regarding the lobbyist registration regulation ought to pass in a new draft. In docket 1149, a message and order approving the petition for a special law, "An Act to Regulate Lobbying Activities Before the City of Boston," ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Madam President, and if my colleagues wish to add or opine on it, happy to answer any additional questions, but very lengthy process, but I think extremely thoughtful and inclusive and transparent, and it's really how we conduct business. And we also created a great partnership through this process, I think, with the mayor and his office in identifying those areas that warranted attention, as well as closing any potential loopholes. And kudos, obviously, to our clerk, who is going to be now in a position to sort of oversee this, and we're going to probably need to support those efforts through personnel and staffing in the next round of budget discussions. And also to Sam Tyler and others that participated from the public, offering their thoughts and comments based on what they're seeing across the country. So, the Municipal Research Bureau played a very active role in this alongside of this body, our colleagues, their input, attending all of the hearings, all the working sessions, lending your thoughts and ideas and advice to this legislation. And of course, we were here very late last night, working with the administration on sort of the finer points. So, also, thank you to the mayor and his team and staff for a great job working with us. Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to.
I wanted to echo all the acknowledgements that our chairman made. It really was a team effort, and even up until the final moments before the council meeting. So thank you particularly to the cosponsors of the council's version, President Campbell and Council Flaherty, and to Council Flaherty for his stewardship over an evolving process that both had content changing and process changing and lots of procedure involved. So I'm really proud at where we've ended up. I think this is a very specifically tailored ordinance, both to municipal government and to the city of Boston, in what we're requiring, how we're defining activities that are included and not included, that I think get at exactly what the public will want to know. It's also requiring disclosures at a frequency that is more matched to the pace of city business. And so I think we've really, in partnership with the administration and the Municipal Research Bureau, and particularly on the shoulders of Christine O'Donnell and Michelle Goldberg, gotten done a product that we should all be really proud of. I want to just read a little bit more of the Title and Purpose Clause that Council Flaherty had alluded to, because I think it just captures the exact ethos of what we're accomplishing, that the purpose is to promote good governance and to ensure transparency in government by requiring registration and disclosure. Secondly, to create fairness and consistency by applying the same rules to all persons engaged in lobbying activities. And finally, to reinforce the community's trust in the integrity of its government by guaranteeing convenient, timely access to information about attempts to influence decision-making. So for me, that last point is the most important, that this is, I can't think of specific examples where, in my office or our offices, we're trying to call out something or highlight something, but it's more about having our doors totally open, having all the information available so that we and our constituents have a sense of how business is being conducted, and therefore to continue reinforcing that partnership between community and government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Wu. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Madam Clerk, you want to speak on this matter? I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to Council Wu for your hard work on this and partnership, Council Flaherty for your leadership, the back and forth, the long hours, the working sessions, to all of my colleagues on the council for their dedication and hard work to this, and commitment to having the tough conversations to get us to this final version so that we can actually take action and get something on the books with respect to this. And I also want to thank Central Staff, Christine and Michelle, for the hard work that you guys put in, and Central Staff often doesn't get thanked enough. So thank you, ladies, for your hard work on this. At this time, Council Flaherty, who is the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee reports and passage of Docettes 1148 and 1149. I'm going to take them up separately. For Docket 1148, Council Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of that docket in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 1148 has been passed. For Docket 1149, Council Flaherty, who is the Chair, obviously, of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 1149 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 1149 has been passed in a new draft. Madam Clerk, if we could move on to Docket 1150.
Docket 1150, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC Ordinances, Chapter 18-1.16, Parkway or Street Occupancy Permits for Delivery Vehicles. For delivery vehicles.
Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is from Matters Most Recently Heard, Docket 1150, it's an ordinance to create a Parkway or Street Occupancy Permit for Delivery Vehicles. We had a hearing on this matter Monday, September 24. It was sponsored by Mayor Walsh, referred to the committee back on August 1. During this hearing, the Director of Strategic Initiatives in the Boston Transportation and Public Works Department, Daniel Lesser, testified on behalf of the administration. I thought I saw him earlier today, had popped in. Was brand-new in his position, but it was a pleasure to work with. He explained the development of the proposal, explained that BTD and the Public Works Department staff were reporting feedback back from residents asking that permits be made available for delivery vehicles. He went on to explain that there is currently no such permit, and that a general occupancy permit requires a charity bond. The proposal seeks to permit delivery vehicles similar to moving trucks, furniture trucks. He explained that the permits would be intended to service residents with sort of a one-off need for a delivery, and that the permits were mostly envisioned for residential rather than commercial use. As the Chair of the Committee, he took the time to reach out to representatives of the trucking industry, as well as representatives of the retail industry, you know, wanted to make sure that it wasn't being mandated and that they had the option or into the resident had the option. So this is sort of an optional ordinance. During the hearing, we heard, again, both for the need and the incentive for residents to purchase these permits, the designs of the signs, the BTD enforcement on the permitted spots, and the need to balance and avoid blocking street traffic and avoid taking up limited spaces. And initially, they had pushed for a sort of a 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And if you think about deliveries, when you have a delivery coming to your house or a service coming to your house, they usually give you sort of a four-hour window. And we felt that the four-hour window was more than sufficient if we're going to be taking very precious parking spaces off of neighborhood streets, particularly in densely populated neighborhoods where parking is a premium, that we needed to kind of dial it in a little bit. And obviously, the Director agreed and felt the same way. So the committee acknowledged the upcoming deadline for council action on this docket, also stated the desire that we wanted to check in with folks from trucking and retail, which we did. And as a result of the clarifications and comments at the hearing, the committee has made the following changes to Docket 1150. The amendment to CBC 16-1.16 is amended to limit the delivery permits to four-hour windows per vehicle and clarify the purpose of such permits as an option or a requirement for residents and businesses receiving deliveries. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that Docket 1150 ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, and welcome any comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Anyone else wishing to speak on this docket? At this time, Council Flaherty, who is the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 1150 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 1150 has been passed.
Docket number 0265, Order for Hearing Regarding Vocational Education in the City of Boston.
Council Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This past Monday evening, I chaired a policy briefing at Madison Park Vocational Technical High School regarding vocational education in the city of Boston. And I am very grateful to the Madison community for allowing us to have that briefing there and the hospitality they showed us while we were there. I'd like to thank Councilors Wu and Janie for their partnership in this work, and Madam President for also attending Monday evening. I'd like to give a special thanks to Ron Cobb from Central Staff for helping to make the briefing possible and, again, set us up so we look like we always know what we're doing, especially when we're on the road. The purpose of this policy briefing was to share some of the work that my colleagues and I have done to date and to provide an opportunity for feedback directly from the school community, both the actual school community and the community that's supporting the school. Since last spring, we have met with students, teachers, supporters, and members of the Madison Park School community. We have also begun visiting other vocational schools in the Commonwealth to learn and see what they offer, including their admissions policy, programming, pathways to careers, higher education opportunities, and more. As I mentioned in my opening remarks at the briefing, Madison Park is an opportunity for us to create a real doorway to the future for so many of our students. Working together with the school and the community at large, we can do better for them because our kids deserve it. Madison Park is the only vocational technical school in the city of Boston, and it's important that we, as a body and as a school administration and an administration, recognize their successes, recognize their needs, and begin to support them in the way that they deserve. We need to do better in funding. We need to do better to create stronger partnerships and increase the number of partnerships, increase resources, and make sure that they have the appropriate application and admissions process, and to help them and support them to do better at recruitment. We learned that Madison Park has 500 vacant seats. That's 500 of our city's kids missing an incredible opportunity of education and of skills, when almost all of the other voc-tech programs in Massachusetts have thousands of kids on wait lists. I hope that in continuing this work, we are able to change the story that exists for Madison in reality and exists in myth, and to ensure that at the top of the Build BPS list includes some real support for Madison Park. We will certainly be following up with additional working sessions and/or hearings, and look forward to continuing this work in partnership with Council Wu and Council Janie. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sabi George. Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Chairwoman Sabi George and Council Janie. It was a great, great session at Madison Park, following some great conversations that we've had and several visits out to other schools. I just remain more convinced than ever that vocational education is the key to so much of what we're fighting for, opportunity and better outcomes and stability for families and even making a dent in issues like the opiate crisis. If we can connect our young people to the jobs that are already here and that just need that gap to be filled with vocational training, we could make anything happen for them. So it feels very possible and doable, especially after the conversations we've had, there are little tweaks, like as Council Sabi George had mentioned, around admissions policy, around funding in certain places, and around the types of industry that we're connecting in. So I'm really excited, and she's just done an incredible job of steering us through different phases of this, so looking forward to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. And I know if Council Janie were here, she's out today, she would stand up and speak as well. I just want to thank you, Council Sabi George, for hosting the hearing and for the setup, for allowing us to listen to the community and the folks from the school, including the teachers there. Thank you, Council Wu, of course, for your hard work on this. And Council Presley, who's been talking about Madison, frankly, for some time. And I will say, I'm just not going to be as nice. It was heart-wrenching to hear from those families and teachers and students. I was there the very next day for something else, and we have to move on this. And so I appreciate your leadership in this space. I think one thing I love about the council is we want to take action, we don't want to waste time. And so I hope that these incredible conversations that you've been having, that we are moving this forward in a faster way to meet the needs of those families. And so I look forward to continuing to be a partner in the work. So thank you very much. At this time, Docket 0265 will be assigned to the committee, will remain in the Committee on Education. Motion, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 1420, Council Wu Offer the Following Order for Hearing Regarding Implementing a One Card Municipal Identification Program in the City of Boston.
Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is, just to get an update for the council on the work that has happened around a municipal ID. As a quick reminder, we had filed a hearing order in the last term, and Council Presley had chaired a hearing, very productive hearing, in October of 2016 on the idea. Many other cities across the country have chosen to start a specific municipal ID in order to take down some barriers for particular communities in accessing formal government-issued ID. You get asked for this ID when you're trying to get into many buildings for a job interview or a meeting. When you go on Amtrak, they ask for this kind of ID. And so particularly for undocumented residents, particularly for residents experiencing homelessness, for members of the transgender community, it can be difficult to get this type of state-issued ID with all the requirements or other types of federal ID. So city ID, municipal ID can help bridge that gap. The key is making it a big enough, attractive enough program that everybody wants to take part. And cities have done that by linking it to cultural opportunities. So with one card, we can consolidate, make all of our wallets and purses smaller by linking, consolidating everything from your library card to your T-card to the BCYF identification cards. We can streamline those services. We can also partner with institutions to give things like bike-share memberships or a year at the MFA, and that's what some of the other cities have done and talked about, kind of linking up all the institutions in the city. After we had our hearing in October 2016, that year's budget included funding allocated by the mayor and the administration for a study. That study went out in 2017, has come back. So I believe we need to think about, get the results of that, and think about if and how and when we can make this step possible for the nearly one-fifth of residents in Boston that this would make a real difference to. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to commend the maker and to thank her for her leadership and her vigilance in this space, and looking forward to the continued partnership of the city to see this actualized. For all of the systemic disparities and inequalities that we talk about, you know, this is one key way to really get at them, because this is about dismantling barriers and increasing access and making it possible for people to more effectively navigate the city. For all the things we fight for, if people don't have a basic mobility, this is about not only boosting the dignity of immigrants, of those experiencing homelessness, of youth in our foster system, of those re-entering who have been incarcerated back into our neighborhoods and into society, the dignity of those living with mental illness or individuals with disabilities, all who face barriers to everything from, you know, renting or buying a home to applying for a job. Again, just basic city services that would ensure them an equity in their mobility in our city. So this stands to not only boost the dignity of all of those groups that are often overlooked, but also to boost our economy. Because in doing this, this ensures that all individuals in the city of Boston have an equity and opportunity, as I've said many times before, to not only get their piece of the pie, but to contribute to it. And so without this, we are really shortchanging ourselves in terms of every individual in the city of Boston being able to bring to bear their full contribution to the city. So I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Council Presley.
Thank you, Council Wu.
Council Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Council Wu for continuing her efforts on this. It's certainly a need that continues in our communities, in the city of Boston and beyond. And I know other smaller municipalities in Massachusetts are continuing to examine this, and I think it would be important and useful for them to partner with the city of Boston. I think we should certainly explore that, whether it's Somerville or Cambridge, both whom I know have proactive, progressive elected officials who are trying to move forward on this. And make sure, as Council Wu wisely pointed out, that this is an attractive enough option for everyone to join, that we want people to join this, whether we're talking about partnering with the MBTA or others, is really important. And I just can't say enough, I know how difficult it can be to move something like this forward, and I really would add my name and look forward to continuing to work with Council Wu, with our colleagues, with the administration, on getting this done.
Thank you, Council Zakim. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please add my name, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Council Siomo, Council Baker, Council Edwards, Council Sabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council McCarthy, Council O'Malley, Council Presley, as well as Council Zakim, as well as the Chair. Docket 1420 be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services, Veterans and Military Affairs.
Docket number 1421, Councilors Zakim and Flynn Offer the Following Order for Hearing Regarding the Boston Freedom Rally.
Council Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Flynn for joining with me in this hearing order, as we both, I represent the entire common, it borders up against Council Flynn's district, and we both heard a lot, as I know many of our at-large colleagues have, over the years, about negative impacts from the Freedom Rally, from Hemp Fest, whatever it's called. And I want to start off by saying, and this is certainly not about being for or against the use of marijuana, recreational or medicinal. I have been a supporter of specific dispensaries, of legislation to liberalize our policies around marijuana and cannabis in Massachusetts. But this is about the proper use of Boston Common, one of the jewels of our city, of impacts to surrounding neighbors, to visitors. Every year that I've been on the Boston City Council, we have heard complaints around this event, which now is three days long. It used to be a one-day event, both around cleanup, which I certainly hear more of about this than from other similar-sized events, and the fact that smoking is prohibited on Boston Common, as is in all of our city parks, regardless of what the substance is, whether it's a cigar, a cigarette, or cannabis. And I think that's something that we need to be looking at. And at this point, out of, I think, frustration, a lot of our... And at this point, out of, I think, frustration, a lot of our constituents in the Beacon Hill downtown neighborhoods have tried over the years to work with the Parks Department, the Police Department, on ways to make sure that the permits and the rules are respected, and we need to continue doing that. We need to get folks in here that will make sure we're respecting the First Amendment rights of everyone in the city of Boston, but also mitigating impacts. I don't think there's any issue around the message of what this rally is or what this event is, but there are impacts that are felt in the neighborhood, that we do have activities occurring there that need to be looked at, and we need to find a solution. So I look forward to this hearing with the Law Department, with advocates from all sides of this issue, with people from across the community, to find a solution here, so that we can maintain what clearly is a popular event for many people, while also respecting the rules and regulations of our parks, and I look forward to moving forward on that, and I want to thank again Council Flynn for his partnership on this.
Thank you, Council Zakeham. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council Zakeham, for offering this hearing with me. Like Council Zakeham, anytime my constituents bring a complaint to my attention, I take it very seriously, like all of my colleagues do, as does the administration as well. Like all of you, we try to do our due diligence to the best of our ability to follow up with city officials for next steps moving forward. Like Council Zakeham, I represent many neighborhoods in the impacted area of the public garden and the Boston Common, including downtown Boston, downtown Crossing, Chinatown, Bay Village, parts of Beacon Hill, parts of Back Bay. I receive calls from many constituents expressing concern about the conditions of both parks following the weekend. As Council Zakeham mentioned, this is not about being in favor or against marijuana. Residents relay to me reports of parked cars on green space, camping in the park, leaving trash throughout the park. I think it is appropriate to look into what's taking place at the most recent event and come up with a plan that works for everybody. For me, as well as Council Zakeham, this is about quality-of-life issues throughout the neighborhoods surrounding the park. In the final analysis, Boston Common Public Garden, it's the oldest public space in the country. It is one of the most beautiful parks in the country, and we want it to remain that way for everybody, including children, seniors, the disabled, residents in the area, families in the city, and tourists that visit our great city. I'm focused on what needs to be done to make sure that the public garden and Boston Common remain beautiful and accessible. It must also be safe and clean. These are my strongest concerns about the public garden and Boston Common. We must work closely with the neighborhood and City Hall to protect those unique qualities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Edwards, Council Sabi George, Council Wu, is that a hand, Council Flaherty, Council Baker, as well as the Chair. At this time, docket 1421 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment Sustainability in Parks.
Docket, docket number 1422, Councilors McCarthy and O'Malley offer the following order for a hearing regarding expansion of city development requirements with a focus on achieving baseline tree preservation and total tree capacity on a development site.
Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to thank Council O'Malley for signing on with me. I figured if you're going to write something up about green, you better count the green guy in, so Matt's in, and I appreciate that. I want to thank Lee Blazi and Nita Holder also, who did all, a lot of the research behind this. It's reported in the last hearing regarding the tree canopy in Boston that Boston had a plan to plant 100,000 new trees by 2020. To date, we planted about 10,000, but we've removed about 6,000 for a loss. Net loss of 4,000 doesn't include the number of trees lost by development. We all know that there are trees are one of the easiest and most effective ways to combat the threat of global warming. Once a site's been purchased for development, it's often the practice to begin clear counting the site before the process has even begun, which is a huge problem, I know in District Five. The practice of building lot line to lot line supersedes any meaningful discussion regarding the preservation or the protection of trees, such a valuable resource. Many towns and cities, including Wellesley, Lexington, Newton, Portland, I'm talking about plants, I figured everybody would stay, have successfully instituted the permitting process ordinances by laws to protect and preserve the tree canopies. The methods vary from including consideration of caliper, critical root zones, diameter of the tree at breast height, drip lines, safe tree areas, as well as tree banks. Many start with the premise that all trees are protected, whether private or public, and require some measure of review before removal. As Boston continues to work, a lot of us were at the climate-ready plan up at the Parkman House. We realize that we're going to miss this opportunity to enhance the plan with methods to protect and preserve old growth in trees, so we can all agree that trees are a key element in combating the efforts of global warming, that now's the time to take a serious look at incorporating regulations aimed to protecting trees as developers come into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my dear colleague and friend, the District Five City Council, for his leadership on this. I was delighted when Council McCarthy asked for my partnership on this, and it dovetails nicely on some work that Council Presley and I did as it relates to the tree canopy overall. This is obviously an issue that I'm very, very passionate about, and it's not only the environmental issue, although that is important. Trees help us prevent flooding, they help us lower greenhouse gas emissions, they produce oxygen, they intercept airborne particles. It's also a public health issue. Studies have shown definitively that respiratory health is improved dramatically in neighborhoods with an increased tree coverage and canopy. And then finally, it is a quality-of-life issue. Trees are beautiful. Joyce Kilmer said it best, "I think I shall never see a home as lovely as a tree." They also cool us down. Palo Alto, California, has actually used great success. An increased tree canopy in certain residential neighbors has seen the temperature drop in those houses by six to eight degrees, so you think about that. You're going to save money. You have trees, you are going to save money. The cost of planting a tree and maintaining a tree is dwarfed by the benefits that you get from this. So I would say that we are being good fiscal stewards by increasing our tree canopy as well. Work that Council Presley and I looked at at a hearing several weeks ago alongside Chief Cook, talked about ways that we can really grow our overall tree canopy, which we'll continue to focus on, we'll continue to work on. What I appreciate about this hearing order that was really led by Council McCarthy is that we also addressed the issue of replanting trees during construction. We are in the third biggest building boom in Boston's history. We are seeing a lot of trees go down. We're seeing major work, this is what has happened in Jamaica Plain with the removal of the Casey Overpass, where you had many mature trees removed. You're seeing now, and it's still a little bit early, but you are seeing a significant number of more trees that are planted, and it really is going to look beautiful, it's already looking so much better, and that's the way we can address it. So it's not one or the other, we can't say that development is going to make us lose our trees. Yes, certain trees will be lost, but we can also, as a body, as an oversight, as neighborhood leaders, make sure that every development includes X number of trees that are planted and maintained, and mature trees for every tree that is removed. So this is a really exciting, a really timely hearing order. Delighted to continue to partner with Council McCarthy and Council Presley as well, and look forward to holding a hearing in relatively short order. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter, add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Baker, Council Siomo, Council Edwards, Council Sabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council Presley, Council Wu, Council Zakeham, as well as the Chair. Docket 1422 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning Development and Transportation. Moving on, I am informed by the clerk that we have two late-file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the two late-file matters will be added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first.
Thank you, Madam President. From Kim Janey, Boston City Council, District Seven, September 25, 2018. Dear Madam Clerk, I write to inform you that I will be absent from the City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 26. As Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, I will be traveling to Seattle as part of an arts and culture learning journey sponsored by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Please read this letter into the record. Sincerely, Kim Janey, District Counselor from District Seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first late-file matter will be placed on file.
Second late-file matter, offered in the City Council on September 25, 2018. Councilor Campbell ordered that effective Saturday, September 29.
So I'll just quickly speak on this. This is a personnel matter for central staff. Yesterday, the Rules Committee held a hearing with respect to central staff structure changes. I want to first thank Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council Baker, and my Vice-Chair, Council Siomo, for attending. We talked about some changes that have already been made that you've seen, for example, Ashley, who in a most beautiful way greets everyone coming into the council chamber, obviously joined our team, but we also had to make some other changes and decisions. Two of them had to do with two positions that were currently, or currently are interim. That is the Central Staff Director, and that is also the Business Manager position. We obviously made those changes, given some stuff from the past, and Drew Lady has been serving as interim Staff Director for some time, and Lorraine has been serving as interim Business Manager for some time. For a while, they were wearing two hats, and they worked incredibly hard for this council, and they continue to. So the committee discussed and decided to remove the interim label and to make them permanent, so Drew Lady will come on as the permanent Central Staff Director, and Lorraine as the permanent Business Manager. We obviously want to take a vote on that, but that is the goal. And then the third position that we also discussed was the Budget Director position. Kate, obviously, who was just, we all loved, has moved on, and Michelle has stepped into that role in many ways. She was already assisting Kate when Kate was still here, she was sort of Kate's number two. Council Siomo also talked about Michelle assisting him during the budget process. She was trained, she shadowed Kate, and so we discussed Michelle moving into that role, but keeping and maintaining some of her responsibilities as a legislative aide, and also when it comes to committee support. She did not want to let go of those responsibilities, but absolutely was enthusiastic about stepping into the budget role. Council Siomo seconded all this. He also was very happy about Michelle stepping into this role related to the budget. And we also talked about, this leaves us with a vacancy, and there was some thought around a budget analyst or someone with sort of an economic background being useful to central staff. We'll continue those conversations as to what that position could look like, but for today, we are taking a vote on changing Drew Lady's title from interim Staff Director to just plain old Central Staff Director. And mind you, she's been on the council for about 12 years. And then for Lorraine, who's been on the council for two decades, she, switching her title from interim Business Manager to just plain old Business Manager. So at this time, I would love to take a vote on this. Each of you should have not only their names, their titles, salaries in front of you, but if anyone else wants to speak on this matter before we take a vote? No? Oh, never mind. Let's take a quick recess.